Good morning. Thanks for getting that one the other day. Maybe Randy did it for you. Thank you.
Before we get started this morning, I think we do.
Father, we come to you and first thing we say, Lord, is just thank you for being a good father and looking over us and just caring for us the way that you do. And I thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us. Lord, I thank you that you have ordained government under you, Lord, and I just ask that you lay your hand upon this meeting, that the decisions that are made, Lord, are pleasing to you, and I thank you most of all for your son, God, who came to die for us as sinners, that we might have eternal life with you. And I just ask that you bless each family that's represented here, and if there's hurts and needs in any family, God, I just ask that you touch them, send the Holy Spirit to be with them. Again, we thank you for all your blessings and we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll hold them in order. Mr. Fowler?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Here.
Commissioner Hartman?
Here, ma'am.
Does everyone have a checklist of minutes?
Yeah.
We have a special session scheduled for April 2, 2018, without a motion.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second. Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyler?
Yes.
Commissioner.
As written.
We also have a special meeting that was held on April 18, 2018, without a motion to approve. Motion to approve. Second. Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes, ma'am.
Next on the agenda is bill of minutes.
First one's for Brett Jones, 05-09-03-104-82, for coal farm, no subdivision or floodplain issues, recommend for approval. Brad and Christine Genon, 04-20-02-38-0B, for winery, no subdivision or floodplain issues, recommend for approval. Next is Jerry and Paula Cochran, for porch, no subdivision or floodplain issues, 05-10-03-28C, recommend for approval.
No, there's not one there. Is that something I don't hear? Now, maybe it is. Maybe a second.
It's new. One more.
Make a motion to approve. Second. Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyler?
Yes.
Commissioner.
As written.
We also have a special meeting that was held on April 18, 2018, without a motion to approve. Motion to approve. Second. Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes, ma'am.
Next on the agenda is bill of minutes.
First one's for Brett Jones, 05-09-03-104-82, for coal farm, no subdivision or floodplain issues, recommend for approval. Next is Bruce and Kay Newham, 01-33-00-476A, for carport, no subdivision or floodplain issues, recommend for approval. Brad and Christine Genon, 04-20-02-38-0B, for winery, no subdivision or floodplain issues, recommend for approval. Next is Jerry and Paula Cochran, for porch, no subdivision or floodplain issues, 05-10-03-28C, recommend for approval.
No, there's not one there. That's it. Is that something I don't hear? Now, maybe it is. Maybe a second.
It's new. One more.
Before you, I'll just call by the desk.
Make a motion to approve. Second. Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyler?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes, ma'am.
Next on the agenda is county finances. Darren, if anybody had any questions they could ask, the worst to be in what we study reports, which might...
Every week.
I mean, every week.
Yeah.
Sometimes twice.
Sometimes about twice, but I can't figure out what I'm doing.
Okay, there's nothing under old business, under new business. We have approved all the bills. Does everyone have a checklist of those? Make a motion to approve the bills. Second. Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyler?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes, ma'am.
Next on the agenda, we have the state's attorney's annual report. Provided everyone with a copy of the report, you can obviously review that at your convenience, but we filed almost 4,000 cases last year, over 300 felonies, which is the most since the records were available from 1985. I am confident that's the most felonies that have ever been filed in our county. We had 47 prison sentences last year, $285,000 collected, including $68,000 in restitution, providing services to 767 crime victims, and we were over $5,000 under budget. So, there are a number of statistics in there. If you have any questions, you can let me know, and if anybody in the audience is interested, I have copies available. Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
I don't remember Tyler from year before, 200 felonies. How does that compare with year before?
There's a chart in there on page six. Last year, we had 251 felonies. This year, we had 307. And it goes back there to 2005. But prior to 2005, the average was around 150 to 200. Very good. Very good report. Next on the agenda, we have an ordinance submitting in section six of Article III of Chapter 21 of the Union County Code ordinances regarding the special use of liquor options. to a business corporation located within Union County, which is not the holder of any other license out of this chapter, and shall authorize such business corporation to contract with or otherwise make arrangements with the holder of a liquor license in the county and state of Illinois, adjoining Union County for the purpose of allowing the holder of such liquor license in the county and the state of Illinois, adjoining Union County to transfer a portion of its alcoholic liquor inventory from its retail license premises to designated site on the premises of the business corporation for a specific event, and to sell or offer for sale of retail only on the premises specified in the request to transfer to alcoholic liquor for use or consumption, but not for resale and import. And this came about as a request from a business in the county that tried to get businesses in the county to be a special event for them, but evidently everyone was already booked up and there was nobody available from the county for this purpose. So, this will allow them to go outside the county for this term. Anyone have any questions?
Tyler, can you give a substantive summary of that?
That the amendment allows a business in the county to seek a license, to allow a license of the holder of a liquor license and then adjoining county to provide alcohol at one event per calendar year in the county on the premises of that business corporation.
So, the holder of the I would be the local business outsourced, yeah? Thank you.
Yeah, the liquor license holder in the county is already able to obtain that license in order to go and provide liquor on the premises of any other place. So, this would just allow the business corporation, if they, in addition to allowing liquor license holders in this county to obtain such license, it would allow a non-licensed holder in this county to obtain a license if they wanted to have someone from an adjoining county to do that. Thanks. Any other questions? Our motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the change or the addition of the order.
Second. Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Hartman?
Yes, ma'am.
Next on the agenda, we have acceptance of the resignation letter from Perry Hill from the Missouri State Department of Public Water District, Board. The board received a letter from Perry Hill saying, "With great concern, I'm submitting my resignation letter for the Missouri State Department of Public Water District, effective immediately." So...
I make a motion to accept the resignation letter.
Second. Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Hartman?
Yes, ma'am.
Next on the agenda, we have acceptance of the resignation letter from Perry Hill from the Missouri State Department of Public Water District, Board. The board received a letter from Perry Hill saying, "With great concern, I'm submitting my resignation letter for the Missouri State Department of Public Water District, effective immediately." So...
I make a motion to accept the resignation letter.
Second. Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Hartman?
Yes, ma'am.
Next on the agenda, we have acceptance of the resignation letter from Perry Hill from the Missouri State Department of Public Water District, Board. The board received a letter from Perry Hill saying, "With great concern, I'm submitting my resignation letter for the Missouri State Department of Public Water District, effective immediately." So...
I make a motion to accept the resignation letter.
Second. Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Hartman?
Yes, ma'am.
Next on the agenda, we have acceptance of the resignation letter from Perry Hill from the Missouri State Department of Public Water District, Board. The board received a letter from Perry Hill saying, "With great concern, I'm submitting my resignation letter for the Missouri State Department of Public Water District, effective immediately." So...
I make a motion to accept the resignation letter.
Second. Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Hartman?
Yes, ma'am.
Bobby, does that say, "With great concern," he submitted the resignation?
Yeah, actually, it did. It did say, "concerned." I hope he meant regret.
Should we look into that? There's a problem there?
We're looking into it. We haven't made the new appointment yet, so it's in the process.
I did talk to some people yesterday. They're meeting, I think, on, it's several days before our next meeting, that their meeting, and then they're going to discuss this and then have a recommendation for us. But I will talk to somebody back...
Yeah, thanks. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the opponent of justice mistake with the Shawnee Valley District Board of Directors. And he is currently on that board. We did receive a letter...
We did, and I don't have a copy of it initially, but they recommended him for reappointment.
His appointment would go from the first Monday, May 28, until the first Monday of May 2023. Any question?
No.
Motion to approve. I make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second. That's the fourth. Yeah.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Hartman?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, next on the agenda, selection of an auditor. Do you want to talk about that? We advertised for a bid and received one bid.
Yes, we received one bid from a company by the name of Sickage. We met with them a few weeks ago and cleared up some questions that we had, and they introduced themselves to us and told us, you know, the timeline and how they would do everything. They're a reputable company. We had some references from people, and they gave them good references. I've reached out to them to get a copy of the engagement letter that will need to be signed. We don't have it yet, but I talked to Tyler, and you guys can still go ahead if you so choose to approve them as the auditor and either grant you or I permission to sign the contract with them at a later date.
Darren, you were at the meeting, too. We talked to them. It seemed like an exception, aren't you?
Yeah, I've seen them at trains in Springfield and other places before. They serve a lot of really well-ground organizations, kind of models some of what we do here. Some of the clients that they have other places base on their work, so, yeah, they're really good.
Yeah, I also made some calls or reserve when the calls were made and heard the conversations, and it was all in vain.
Any other questions? Motion to approve.
Make a motion that we approve Angie to pursue writing the contract and securing it as our auditor. Sickage.
Second. Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Hartman?
Yes, ma'am.
Next on the agenda, it is the selection of an information technology firm. Any questions?
I think all our questions were answered from emails this week, as far as Angie put out and everybody, some of the office holders she had. Everybody is good with the responses we got.
Are there some questions?
No, no, I agree with Max, but the questionnaires that were sent out, they were, we got responses, and then I reached out to some office holders and department heads to ensure that the questions that they had were answered and asking what they thought and who they would like, and, yeah, no, all my questions were answered.
If there's no further questions, I have a motion.
I make a motion that we approve Mayer Technologies for our IT.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Hartman?
Yes, ma'am.
Next on the agenda, it's the information case Johnson, Brad.
Good morning.
Good morning.
For those who don't know me, I'm Brad Remble. I was born and raised in Union County. I am chairman of the Anne Jonesboro Water Commission, only five years. What we have done is roughly a $4.5 million upgrade to our system. This is Casey Johnson. Casey's superintendent to our board. We have an open house, the 16th, 17th, 19th, plus, close enough.
It's a three-day affair.
At this point in my life, I'm trying to remember to put shoes on them.
Yeah, May 19, from 1 to 3 p.m. It's on a Saturday. We've reached out to the city Jonesboro, city manna, Shawnee Valley Water District, Lake Creek Water District, and I've taken the opportunity to invite you guys.
Very good.
Take a tour of our plant, and I'll try to explain it the best I can, and we've run some ads in the paper in public. People want to let them know where their drinking water comes from.
Very good. Appreciate you.
Appreciate you guys having us. Hope to see you there. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
I will try to make it.
Next on the agenda, is acceptance of the resignation of Alex Fowler as county commissioner. My board's not very good today, but Alex, I'll try to read your letter. That's all right.
All right, I can just explain if you prefer.
That's fine.
So, basically, July 2017 was when Dale Russell and Stan Hunter and I spoke about Dale's transition away from the board for some personal reasons. At that time, I fully expected to be able to devote a big chunk of my available free time to the work of the county, and since then, it's just not, it's not panned out like I had hoped. Things in my professional life, my personal life have changed, or that's not the case anymore, and I would rather resign than to risk the county not getting the best possible person for the job, and so if there's even a shred of doubt in my mind, that was my decision to make, that resignation was preferable to the subpar work. So, the work that the people here are doing, the office holders here, is probably more important now than ever, with the precarious situation that our state is in and our economy is in locally. So, it does hurt to walk away believing that I can help, but at the same time, if I can't devote the time, that's what has to happen, so. Good luck to you.
Well, I appreciate your service. I appreciate what you've done and your time and thoughtfulness and honesty. I see you go. I understand totally. It was explained to me. It was two times a month when I ran, and that's far from true. Maybe not two days a week, but appreciate that you're stepping up.
According to the letter, you don't have a fact, that you may be 11.
Yeah, I was going to ask Tyler if that's an appropriate timeline for the resignation. My last day would be the end of the day on May 11 would be the next board meeting where the appointment would be made.
Well, the board would have 60 days to make the appointment from the date of the resignation, so we have 60 days from, I believe, from the 11. But, yeah, it could be made at that meeting. It's our month.
Motion to accept.
Make the motion to accept the resignation of Alex.
Second. Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Hartman?
Yes, ma'am.
We will have an executive session at the end of the meeting. Are there any committee or boards? Is there any other business? Any public comments?
I do.
Yes.
As you're aware, I was one of the bidders for the IT contract. In reviewing the videos from April 18, part 10, 27 minutes, 25 seconds in, Commissioner Miller can be heard to say that he won't consider me due to past actions, and Commissioner Foster, I believe, cuts that sentence off to state that I'm an idiot and that he doesn't care if that's on camera. Those comments considered, I don't feel like my proposal is given a fair consideration. If the office holders and the commissioners feel that we were simply not the right team to handle the job, that's one thing, but if it's a matter of personal opinion of two commissioners that my proposal not be considered fairly, then I think that's a problem.
Second.
Mr. Teller?
Upstate.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Teller?
Yes.
Mr. Hartland?
Yes, ma'am.
We will have an executive session right at the end of the meeting. Are there any committee or boards? Is there any other business? Any public comments?
I do.
Yes.
As you're aware, I was one of the bidders for the IT contract. In reviewing the videos from April 18th, part 10, 27 minutes, 25 seconds in, Commissioner Miller can be heard to say that he won't consider me due to past actions. And Commissioner Foster, I believe, cuts that sentence off to state that I'm an idiot and that he doesn't care if that's on camera. Those comments considered, I don't feel like my proposal was given a fair consideration. If the office holders and the commissioners feel that we were simply not the right team to handle the job, that's one thing. But if it's a matter of personal opinion of two commissioners that my proposal not be considered fairly, then I think that's a problem. So I'd like the commissioners to consider, one, the fact that we are in Union County. My business has donated $30,000 in services and not-for-profits located in Union County. We've donated $10,000 back into our school systems, our sports teams, and our organizations. In reviewing the other proposals, I don't feel like we offer a different service set than any of the other presenters. And in consideration of the comments that were made to the videos, it sounded like our prices were all quite similar. So I would like to know, Commissioner Miller, if you care to elaborate on past actions that caused you to not consider my proposal equal to each of the other proposers?
I did consider your proposal.
Your comment indicated otherwise.
I understand that, and my comment was related to past practices as far as attacks on our former IT person.
All right, in regards to that attack, are you speaking of the email I sent in July 2017, which revealed severe security issues with the county's email system?
Partially, but I think it was done unprofessionally. That's my personal opinion.
So unprofessionally, I could have posted it on my Facebook or made the public scene, but instead, I emailed the people who should care the most about it privately.
I just explained to you my reasoning for saying that. You were, you were put in the top three.
Sure.
In finalists.
But what you're saying is the very reason you, the very reason you considered that an attack is some of the same reasons you're choosing a new IT provider right now because of issues with your email and your security and other things.
I'm not denying that, and I'm not going to argue with you. That's my, my decision, and so we.
Based on your comment, which is on the video, anybody can publicly view, you did not seriously consider me because of that.
No, I did.
And then Mr. Foster, who's not present again, who also wasn't present for my presentation.
I don't have to explain to you my decision.
Sure, I'm just moving on to the next comment that was made was that I'm an idiot and that he doesn't care if that's on camera. Would anyone else consider that to be someone who took me seriously as a contender? Is that a professional way we should, because, because at the end of the day, I'm a taxpayer in Union County, and that's what pays for you guys to sit there and call me an idiot in front of everyone?
You guys that didn't call.
Exactly. I didn't.
Yeah, it wasn't you guys.
I know it wasn't you guys, but I'm just saying that we got a gentleman here, and a gentleman here who I don't feel seriously consider my proposal. And now we're looking at sending almost $5,000 a month to another county. And I think that's a serious issue.
I didn't ask him to let break down what it said. It did not enter into my decision at all. And I, I will echo what Commissioner Teller says. It, it did not have any bearing on my decision at all. My decision was made on the presentations as a whole and then in consultation with the department heads and the office holders that I called. And, and also on the tape, if you look at it, it was, it was, there was a discussion, and it ended up that the final two are the ones we looked at. And those are the ones when I called the office holders and the department heads. That's who I discussed.
Sure.
And based upon that, that's how I made my decision.
I understand. I just want to make sure that I make my opinion known. I mean, if anyone else reviews those videos, I'm sure they feel the same way as me. But I'm the only Union County bidder, and I just want to make sure that my proposal was considered seriously and on a professional level, and that personal agendas weren't used in the decision-making process.
It was not on my.
It was not on my. Thank you.
And, and just to clarify, it's not $5,000 a month difference?
Not exactly. I'm just, based on my.
It's not at all.
Based on my estimate versus the comments made in the video saying that all the pricing was very well in the same ballpark?
Yes.
My estimate was roughly $48, $100 a month. And I just want it to be clear that that money is now getting sent out of Union County, where there was a clear choice.
Yeah, but, but, but your comment while ago said it was $5,000 a month, and actually, it's $11 a month.
No, I'm saying the total contract is roughly $5,000 a month.
Yes.
Yes. And that's, and that's in Union County. I just want to make sure that's not based on personal agendas.
Yep, that, and it's not on my.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
If I, if I may, I just want to say thank you for awarding us the contract.
You're welcome.
If not, make a motion to go into the executive session.
I make a motion we go into executive session for the purpose of employees.
Mr. Teller?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Teller?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Any decisions?
Yes.
Yes.
Angela Chine, I'm sure. I think that's a pretty good candidate. I mean, you know, I'm sure she's a very good candidate. No.
Because I sent Assistant State Attorney Henry. I also sent some, some questions to the victim. Just because they really need, like, input from all of the Union. Always needing a dark.
I'm sure.
Miss, questions that could draw out the question. That one, I would take that out. That's really, we, we tell them, how would you help with everybody?
Seeing I know.
That's fine. The other two would be.